This conference will now be recorded.
Well, thank everybody for being here.
Good to be seen. Thank you all.
First item of business is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on November 25th, 2025. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Announcements. RDC appointment. Dr. Barry Younghands will be now representing the Central School Board on our RDC, effective 2026. And I had another item. We'll not wait till street because this is a pretty big thing, but we got our CCMG grant for 2026 in the entirety of our application. Eight hundred seven thousand dollars. Eight hundred and seven thousand one hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents. So, thank you to the many, many people within the office and our department heads that take part in that. That's huge. It's very much appreciated. Any other announcements?
Just one question.
Sure.
On the appointment with RDC, is this the position that was vacated by old business?
Yeah, and then Robbie Morgan had done it for a while.
Okay, so this is the non-voting member?
Yes. Yep, yep. And I had called them and asked them to get someone on board as soon as possible because of the training that we're going to have on all the housing information after the first few years, so.
Vicky, is the council aware also of the other RDC appointment that you've made?
I told that last meeting, I think, but we've got that on down on the agenda. I think Brady Truex will also be joining. Any other announcements? Okay, well, we.
Devin Darrell has something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have something else?
Yes, I noticed that Kurt's name quite seems missing.
Oh, by golly, you guys got rid of me and I was only missing two names.
Oh, here, here. I apologize. Wait, what's your name?
I don't know. I've been called a lot worse.
Oh, you guys. See, we didn't even need the line, Josh. Okay, on to any open discussion. Department head reports. We're going to get started. Oh, tonight is when Bob, I'm sorry, Bob is at the.
Finning ceremony.
Yes, thank you. So.
He is not going to be here.
Yep, we'll move on to Police Department. Scott, we have an action item, but if you want to do the rest of your report first?
There's not too much to do. If anybody has any questions, I'd rather try to field them.
I was approached this last week, and so I'm going to throw this out for the Parking and Traffic Committee. I was asked if there was a possibility of getting another mirror on the corner at Abbey's. I think, I was having a hard time wrapping my head around what she was telling me, but I think if she's facing the north, she's not able to see traffic coming from the east.
Yeah, especially if it's a longer vehicle. That could be legitimate. Like a truck.
Take note of that. Have you been contacted yet?
Uh-uh.
It was your answer.
But I have, I, yeah, I don't like to turn left there.
Yeah. Yeah, she wants to turn left to go up Alvin Road. There's lots of dark sections that are tough.
If there's a lot of cars there, it's really difficult.
And that section's usually full. Just depends on the length of the vehicles at the end, how much you can see.
So, those who are on the Parking and Traffic, Cory, if you guys will work on that. I don't know, there's probably other places too, and I don't know what those, how much those mirrors cost. It's been a long time since we bought one, but people do appreciate them.
Yeah, they're not that expensive.
Okay.
Keep somebody out of an accident if they're not expensive at all.
You'd have to go there in front of where the lights were.
Do we noted? Appreciate it.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Scott?
I just wanted to publicly say thank you for helping out with the turkey trot. Me and a couple of officers are so great to do that, and it was freezing cold. And they made sure everybody was safe, and we had 193.
Was that a record for you? As freezing cold as it was?
Yeah, well, I guess I should say about 15 didn't show to pick up their bags till later, so, yeah, but that's how many registered.
That's for you.
And you notice none of us three trotted either.
I did neither. You might have been warmer if you had trotted.
I saw on the video, there was just little inky dekeys, little tiny, little tiny ones were doing the turkey trot.
Wow, they braved the cold. So, we appreciate them taking care of everybody.
You're more than welcome. I do want to update, I did the new Durango sitting in the garage. It did show up yesterday. Thanks to Carol for doing the paperwork for that to get it, they delivered it to us. So, basically, all we had to do is exchange a check for the title, a few other documents, pretty easy switch over. So, it's here, now under the next page. SRO will still be helping down there for a while yet due to some circumstances that I'm really not going to discuss tonight, but I just want to let you know, we'll still be there on a semi-regular basis, at least for a while yet. And as far as I know, the Frontier Communication lines that were converted are working great. Matter of fact, they might be working too great because it's quite convenient if they're not working. But I don't think there's been any problems with before we converted to digital, which is really nice. Lot better sound quality, lot more, lot dependability. I, we were supposed to be scheduled for the other four in this building, but the business count rep that I deal with had a family emergency, so he was on a service for probably the last eight or nine days. So, we'll get him up and running as soon as we can get rescheduled for the other one. And that's about it.
Okay, then we'll move on to Deputy Marshal Tyson Zook.
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 Tyson Zook, yes. We have a little bit of a timing issue here. That's why I included it now, because he will have his 180 days in since his completion of the academy and becoming full-time. On, I think it's December 24th is his 180th day. And probably nobody's going to be working on December 24th, or we're not going to have any meetings between now and December 24th. So, I talked to Shannon, and he fits into our personnel policy to be promoted to First Class Deputy Marshal, which will put him at the same pay scale, same benefits as the other road officers. So, I just need your approval to go ahead and promote him to that position. And after talking to Shannon, we would like to do that on January 4th, which is still prior to your January 13th meeting, so that's why I'm bringing it up now because of the timing. It's in our salary ordinance already. The wording and the pay, and it's also in our town policy. I think I referenced it here, it's, yeah, Policy 205. And we did a similar thing just a few months ago for Chase after his 180-day, after the completion of the academy.
Do you have any questions on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Scott's request and promote Deputy Marshal Tyson Zook from Second Class Deputy Marshal to First Class Deputy Marshal, effective January 4th, 2026.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I thank you, and he thanks you, so that's about all I have.
Okay, I have one more, Scott.
Yep.
Do you, do you think they're done with all that hyper-optic so that we can remove those sticks from our yard?
What are the marking sticks? Is that what?
The sticks that say do not move, remove.
Yeah, I see them still, they ran wire today. I saw them running wire in an alley today. So, I don't know if they're done. I know the major flood is done, but I don't know if there's someone in your area that may, you may have the junction box that hooks up a neighbor or two down, down the road. So, I mean, if they're not terribly unsightly or not in your way, I'd probably leave them for now. But they're your property and your sticks, so.
I'll just wait a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for Scott?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Scott. Town manager, Steve.
Thank you. Nothing to add to my regular report that you have. I'm not sure it's on the two-week duration since the last report, so you have it in front of you one page. Any questions you have to answer?
Anybody have any questions for him? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Steve. We will move on to Parks and.
I do have one. He has a, a, a permit, a permit issued for an interior house remodel for a, for a house on 812 South Clark Street.
Yep. And the question is why?
Yeah.
It's involving electric plumbing and one of the main things, but yeah.
Okay, so it involves electric?
Yep.
I didn't, I didn't know we did interior remodel.
Yeah, if you do an electric service upgrade, you have to. Yeah, I think there may have been some interior structure changes, just my recollection as well, but, yeah.
Okay, Casey.
Cemetery. Before the snow, most leaves were picked up. Now, we're just basically plowing. So, any questions on cemetery? Park. Really, the only thing I've updated, you know, since last meeting. Main thing was Christmas lights. And there's, there's something that I cannot work with on the main poles. I did see that. We, we, you know, on the little poles, I can reach. Just the big pole. Yeah, I fixed the one that was out, but the two that are out on the big poles, I don't know if that's the electric company since they do the poles. Would that be Cory?
I'm going out before they said DF5, but.
It was done by, what, or Jason, like, is that the school project? You know?
Yep. Yeah, I, it, I think the two options we could have is call AEP or if that, if the electrical box is ours, which I failed to ask Cory on. Is the electrical box ours?
Yeah, the DF5.
The DF5 is ours?
Once we can actually get the ladder, they will work, they just reset it. We gotta do it, obviously, when the light's on.
We have to do it at night, so Cory and I will, if you're at school, at least try to decide if not, it's going to be inside the pole.
Also, are we going to light the, are we going to light the fountain? Are we going to put the lights on the fountain?
We had volunteers that used to do that.
Yeah, I, I've never, I've never been involved in that part.
You know, the street, the street department did it.
We did it one year.
Nobody guys told me that you would continue doing it.
You're okay. You want us to do it.
Kevin did it.
Yeah.
Is Kevin not going to do it anymore?
I can ask him.
So, that was like, just like a fluke thing?
Yeah, we got everything out. I don't see how to put it up. Sorry. Leaves, then snow.
So, basically, you're too busy.
At this moment, yes, but if we get a little bit of warm weather when you get out there and it trumps your alley, we'll do it.
Well, if he wants help, tell him to call me and I'll help.
And Nancy used to do it, you know, and we did it for a year or two just to get it done. I said it was the least season, then all of a sudden, snow season.
Well, we did have early snow, so.
We had a lot of early.
I'm not really like complaining, I'm just asking. Right, I'm not complaining, I'm asking.
Yes, I have the light there sitting there, so if they do it themselves.
See, am I complaining or am I asking? Well, or, or is it my tone?
You're laying the foundation for it.
Because I think I'm asking.
That sounded like a attorney calling.
I was going to say.
Well, if it gets too much closer to Christmas.
If it gets too much closer to Christmas.
We have survived without it this year.
All right, just like the big Christmas tree that I used to decorate, that nobody, nobody decorates anymore. It's like, come on.
Yeah, I can say, I'm not going to take anything on because I've had challenges just to do what we've done this year, so. I apologize, I can't take any of those on.
It's okay.
So, yeah.
Did you end up fluffing the garlands?
Not all of them.
Actually, Casey, now I looked at your garlands, I think they're fluke enough.
I was going to say, I noticed, I thought they looked nice.
I thought they were fluke enough. Did you not have any, I think they're fluke enough.
I thought Casey went and did it after the last meeting.
And he couldn't do it all, of course, you know why?
I looked at them, Casey, I think they're fine.
Yeah.
But he has a legitimate reason to, there's no fluff in his budget.
I wouldn't charge him, so anyways, the lights of courthouse and most of the lights are on, so, you know, we'll try to address the couple that aren't on. So, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you for all your work.
We've got, we had a lot of volunteers. Yeah, and, yeah, Zane was a big part of Darren C. being with them, and, yeah.
I love the little characters that had the little blow-up, you know, the little blow-up characters that were wandering around.
Those were the library mostly, I think.
Yeah, I thought those were Charlie's.
Yeah, so I think we've got a plan moving forward for the courthouse. We've got to ask every year the pressures. We've got a team put together, so.
And you're recruiting new, I see you're recruiting new younger blood.
Yep, so hopefully moving forward, and we might be changing dates. I talked to Zane on that, with Darren C. We might change from Sunday before, we might move away before Thanksgiving for weather issues, so there's a lot going on. Thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from you again in your business.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right, Street and Cemetery, Cory.
Month of November in the cemetery, we had one service. The street department, obviously, very much leaves, 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 and then starting the ninth of November, the snow started. So, quite a few snow events in November, not abnormal over the last couple of years. With the assistance of Taylor Specialties, we get the Christmas banners up on the light poles. And we're just on snow, so.
Well, the good thing is, is the snow cut your leaf season off early.
Yep.
How do you dig yourself back out?
I really don't have to dig myself back out. Cory likes me. Most of the time.
What you're saying is, are going to be finish up, follow up, and spread.
Yeah.
When we left that Monday before Thanksgiving, there was not one file on the town. And that was started that Thursday, so.
Right, the people that had to rake their leaves, that were going to rake their leaves, had already done it. The people that weren't going to rake their leaves, that don't rake, are the same people that don't shovel their.
We had a lucky year, it was, didn't seem as heavy, and obviously, with that, it would break down, which was a huge thing. Okay, is it really a good job?
The people that were going to walk, to watch the parade, I felt, I felt really bad for them because so many of them had to walk basically in the street because there's so many people that didn't. They didn't shovel their lot.
Anybody have any other questions for Cory on this report? Thank you, Cory. We will move on to your tree trimming.
I'm hoping everybody got the spreadsheet and the quotes they had sent. We had solicited four tree companies and received two replies back. The quotes that you'll see are going to be higher numbers than what it's, what we're actually going to end up paying on both of the companies that we were, both, both of the quotes we received, because both contractors, I asked in the RFQ to give me a recommendation on a particular tree, whether to trim it or remove it, and they both recommended to trim it this year and see if they can save it.
What's the date on that email you got? What is the date on that?
Yeah, like Friday.
Yeah.
I got an email Friday. Tree program estimates shows price comparison template.
It shows that.
And it has quotes. Also attached.
I know, I read something goes through my trash.
There you go. Okay. Do you have a recommendation for it?
Um, yes. The lowest was Taylor Specialties at $23,800. The second quote was Landis Tree at $26,528. I would recommend Taylor Specialty with $2,800. And that will be funded out of, Carol made a doubt on this.
General, CCD.
The general board, CCD, and then the rest of the tree, yeah, tree cemetery.
And that's with the adjustment made from the, for the one that's now being trimmed.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a deduction from what it was.
Anybody have any questions on that?
So, it's the amount of the 25 to 8.
Should be.
It'd be the 23 to 8.
Yeah, 23 to 8, yeah.
I moved, we approved the quote from Taylor Specialties in the amount of 23,800 for the 2026 tree removal and trimming.
That's it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anything else, Cory?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Water wastewater, Terry.
Does the council have a chance to look over the water wastewater report? Any questions? They're going to give you an update on the water station at the sewer ponds. We got a timeline, and we'd like to advertise sometime in January the 7th and the 14th. Received from there with the opening on somewhere around the 27th. That would be the council meeting, the bids. And then after that, that's first week of February or so, have the public works roll over the stuff and have the engineer recommendations and things like that.
Have you met with the engineer?
Yeah.
Have they drawn up the specs?
Yeah. We should have our advertisement somewhere around, depends on the holiday, somewhere, where's January 2nd? That sounds like one of the. And then we'll get that advertising paper.
So, I want to just comment about it, not because I want to interfere, but because I don't, I want to head off something that could happen in the future so that you don't have a problem. This is where typically I would see the notice of the advertisement first. Why? Because if you ask me later, what do I think, and it's bad, we gotta go backwards. So, I don't care if you want me to see it, but, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we can send that one.
Because if, if somebody gives it to me on, you know, the second or third, and we have to put it in the paper on the fourth to meet the seventh, you know, he doesn't give me a chance to.
We can move all this timeline, we can, we can extend it a month, and we can.
And remember, I'm here to help, not to tell you what to do. I'm just saying, so that we don't get to the end and you say, Kurt, what do you think? And I go, I don't know, I've never seen anything. And then I gotta go back and look at it, and I say, well, this notice is screwed up, we gotta start over. It would be better if I asked me, how do I try to make it more efficient? If I see it before the commitment is made to put it in the paper.
So, just as soon as the public works committees have their discussion, then we'll do it?
If you want me to review it.
We haven't seen anything right.
I don't think. That is coming, whatever, three weeks after the holidays.
Coming from the engineer?
Yeah.
So, when we get everything from the engineer, then what, Kurt?
I would suggest share it with me, not because I want to spend it in order to allow it to kind of undo and redo it, just so I can appreciate what you're doing and look at it and make sure that it fits 36112 requirements. That's all I'm looking for.
Okay.
So, if you give it to me prospectively before you approve it and publish it, then I don't have to, we don't have to have controversy over what do we do next, which is undo things, so.
So, when we get this from the engineer, it needs forwarded to you?
Please, respect, yes.
Okay.
So, I can understand what Terry is saying, what the engineer is providing, and give my blessing to it. And if I see something that's red flag, I'll point it out, and you all can decide what to do.
Good.
Better to do it then than after, you know, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube, you gotta.
So, that timeline that Terry has given us is high of contingent on when the engineer gets stuff. And that, like he said, if it has to be adjusted, then we understand that that's what we're doing.
And I'll jump on it as soon as I get it.
Hey.
Are we all on the same page, Eric?
Okay. Great, thank you, Terry. Do you have anything else?
I'm not sure, but we got an email in the afternoon. There's a, somebody wants to sign something for.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to bring that up under Old Business. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, great. All right, that takes care of Department Head Reports. Old Business. The first item I want to bring up is the Owen Park State Road 8 project. It's a small structural replacement. This is an end-up project number 2200659, and we need to sign their, their agreement. And I just want to make sure, first of all, that all of our department heads are okay with the project as they've done it. I am under the understanding that it's already been revised once, okay? And then. And then, second of all, who, who needs to sign the document? So, first thing is, the department heads. Cory signed off, right, basically signed off? Casey has? Scott has? Terry?
No, I haven't.
Okay, are you aware of the project?
Yeah. Yeah, we met with the, we walked through it and everything. We, we told them there's sanitary storm there, it's not on the blueprint. They're worried about the cullards, and the cullards are emergency, in case the lake there behind, the pond behind the library, let's go, we're going to plug the school out. And I'm not sure if we want to remove, to the west, more guard rail. How are we going to protect the kids at the school?
The guard rail's staying.
Yeah, I, maybe he wasn't copied on that.
I probably wasn't.
Remove approximately forty-five foot.
I didn't see that one, because.
I think that might have been on.
I wrote a note that said that I'm absolutely not in agreement if any guard, guard rail goes.
Yeah, there's got to be more than, well, on this print, it says it.
Which, which print is it? There's only been two or three prints, so I don't know which one it is.
I would guess that this that was in my mailbox today is the most updated.
What's the date of it?
November thirteenth, if that's the date.
The letter.
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know what the date is.
What's the date you got, Terry?
No, I just have the original.
The one that I looked at was a hundred and sixty-one feet of guard rail.
A hundred and sixty-one feet, no.
And there's also two end caps left and right of, what are they, forty-something? Hundred and sixty-one in the center and two end caps that are the collapsible part of the guard rail. That's what I looked at, that's what I agreed to. So I'm not sure which copy is which.
Well, is there a deadline on that? They, they keep asking us.
Yeah, thirty days just.
Yeah, it was thirty days, the twenty-fourth of November.
Well, the original letter was dated November thirteenth, and that's the copy you have.
Okay.
And in fact, the prints that you have are dated the same, so they're unrevised.
The print is, but is this? Is the drawing?
The drawing every, is. I'm, I'm pretty sure, that, that, that was all with the November thirteenth.
Okay.
Email and attachment, so.
The first one I saw had no guard rail on the drawing, the second or third one does have a guard rail on the drawing.
Correct.
That's the one I agreed to, the one with the guard rail.
Yeah. On the north side, it says remove forty-five feet, on the west side, on the south side, it's state road eight, it says extend nineteen feet towards the west.
Towards the west?
It's on the November thirteenth.
You had other concerns, Terry, other than the guard rail though? You had other concerns as well?
Well, there is utilities underneath the cullard carpet.
That they don't have listed on there, right, Terry?
So it sounds like we're not ready to sign it. And you shared all that at the site, onsite inspection.
We went and ordered all of it.
Yeah, they were actually going to remove the entire guard rail, and that was a topic of discussion too, leave it alone. Remains there during that meeting, onsite meeting.
What, if, what I would recommend is Terry would get a hold of this done, and then share his concerns with utilities.
Terry's already shared his concern.
I, I met with everyone that did all the survey and.
Yeah, but they've, they've already changed it once for other concerns that weren't met, so if he goes, if, if they find out that Terry's thoughts were included, then.
Right.
It's back in their hands.
Right.
I think that's a good call.
What's the point of contact for this? Is that you, Steve?
Uh, no, actually, it's been Casey on this one because it was, it starts the park, it involved around Owen's Park.
And that's a good question, I don't know if I was, but when the meeting happened, it was everybody, Scott, it was, the point of contact, I think, was everybody, but since it was on the park's property, the email came to us. And that's why I keep.
Oh, that's why they keep.
He's the person that give up a little right away.
Answered your question, that's why I'm asking for the signature and making sure everybody's under the same understanding, because I don't want to sign somewhere, like, I don't, I don't know if I'm authorized to sign that. Basically, what, what I'm reading from the letter is, the only thing, what they want signed out is, it's not gonna do any, the constructions is not gonna hurt or slow any activity down at Owen Park. In my opinion, I'm not attorney, that's what we're signing, that, what, that was the letter. I, I don't think we're, we're approving, I don't even know if we have a choice, in my opinion.
Okay. Kurt's got to come.
I will finish, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
Okay, um, so I read it, thank you for sharing it with me, Casey, and I went through it, and I didn't have any legal objections to it. I'm familiar with this no impact letter that they send out. I was also just concerned to make sure that staff understood what they were doing, and if they did have concerns, that we raise the objections and not sign the no impact letter. But I would say, there's really two ways you could go forward, or two things you could do tonight, so we could get it off dead center. One is authorize Vicki as the owner to sign this document. If and when she's satisfied, gives her the discretion, which you all have to then rely on. If she's, when she's satisfied, after she's obtained all the information she needs from all of her staff, Casey, Terry, et cetera, that there is no impact, substantial impact, and not until then. And then authorize her to sign it outside of a meeting, so she doesn't have to drag it back in front of all of you. Now, if you want to have it in front of you, and you want to be involved, then, then that wouldn't make any sense, you could not do that. But that, to answer your question, who signs it, it should be the owner, which the president of the council is deemed to be the executive in the eyes of the law, despite what end-up I think. So the owner would be Vicki as the executive, okay? So I would suggest she signs it, and if you want to move it out of here, so that you can do it administratively, I would authorize her by motion to do that, if and when and only to the extent she's satisfied that she's gotten everything she needs from her staff to be able to determine there's no impact. That's what I. And if she doesn't get that comfort level, it doesn't get signed, and you bring it back here in jail. I don't know what you think about that, but if guys get her discretion.
Terry, would you be willing to call this gentleman and, and remind him of the concerns you had at the site inspection? Or you want Steve to do that on behalf of you?
I can work with Steve.
Okay, that's fine. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely. Were you getting on the phone?
Oh, no answer.
This whole guard rail thing needs to, needs to be addressed.
Oh, it, it's on here.
It is, it's, they're saying it has been, right, Scott?
That's been addressed as far as I was concerned.
Yep.
And, and on the emails, right, is it, is it fixed?
On the print.
On the print.
Looks like it is to me, but Terry says there's forty-five feet missing on the west end. My major concern is the east end, because that's where the traffic accidents happen, and that's where the guard rail has to be at the strongest. I'm not greatly concerned about the west end, if it's only forty-five feet, because there's not hardly any vehicle traffic turning in that part of the north side.
Well, I'm looking at that, right, the Central Noble sign.
Mm-hmm, is right there.
And their bench is there, and then the guard rail starts.
The guard rail starts a little bit farther east, but yes.
We're going to take forty-five foot of that guard rail away.
There, I assume that they're decreasing the slope, and that's probably why they're taking that away from that west side, but my major concern during the meeting was the east side, on the south side of eight, was where my major concern was to protect kids, even though they are bringing it up to ground level. Because right now, it's what, Casey's five foot, six foot below street, street level.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm honestly, I'm, I could, I could zoom in on my computer, and this one's hard to read. I mean, quite honestly, if I had my computer, I could, I should read it better.
I, I'm comfortable signing it outside of a meeting, as long as I know that all of our department heads and Steve are okay with it.
Here's the deal, I'm going to make the motion to have Vicki be our executive signer outside of a meeting, once she's satisfied that her staff is satisfied. That's my motion. Now I need a second.
I'll start.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
But I, I think the children's safety is numero uno.
Well, we, 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 we all discussed that.
Numero uno. And until you all are happy with that, I wouldn't sign a thing.
And you might want to loop in Central Noble.
Oh, they're at, they're.
They are.
Robbie was there.
They were there.
Yeah, they were there, and they've been emailing, Brady Suxton, and this county town was under there, it's, it's a big deal.
And they also discussed Morgan's, Morgan's Dam.
Yeah.
As part of the potential problem if it was to breach. That's why the drainage is so important there.
Okay, now we're moving on.
Okay, next item under old, you're welcome, next item under old business is discussion on the one-ten South Farm Street building. I requested this go back on, because our last meeting on November twenty-fifth, they made a decision to not sell the property. So my thoughts are, the building could, okay. The building's sitting empty for a long term is a concern of mine. Some of us are wanting a pavilion, but that doesn't save the building, because that means eventually it would be torn, the building would be torn down to put up a pavilion. There's been a lot of safety concerns about the stoplight corner not being safe for sales and food and those kind of things that go on up there, and we talked about using that area. So as I've thought about this more since the last meeting, we at any time could choose to take those things away. We have a pocket park down there that could be used for those kind of things, and a parking lot that's ours, regardless of what we do with the buildings. So if we're that concerned about what's going on on the corner, the stoplight, we could at, at any point say, we're not going to welcome that to happen anymore, it needs to be moved.
And we did put out an RFP publicly, asking people.
If we had any, yeah.
If they had any interest in that building.
And I think the decision that we made, we were assuming that none of the interested parties were willing to pay anything close to the appraisal. I just think we can't, we can't be done with the decision that we made for long term, we have, because like I said, the building can't stay for a long time empty, so.
And here's the deal, I think that some of us here are confused that the building does not have to be sold for the average of the two appraisals.
Unless you sell it directly to somebody not public, and that was what we were talking about doing with this one person that submitted an RFP.
There's two, we have two interested parties in the.
At the very beginning, we wanted.
Right.
That was where the average of the two comes in. If you sell it publicly, you don't have to set it for the average of the two, you just have to set a minimum bid. Now, if you give it to five oh one C three, you can donate it. But if you sell it to a direct individual for economic development reasons, protect the taxpayers' interest in it, that's where you have to use the average of the two. I know it's confusing.
Right, but I'm saying that if you sell it like in a closed bid.
Closed bid directly to somebody that does, or you mean a sealed bid?
Sealed bid.
You do a sealed bid, you gotta, you do not have to have the average of the two, you just have to set a minimum bid.
Right.
You can use the appraisal to determine what that is.
Right.
Yeah. I know it's confusing, because it's really.
But the star team was here specifically. And they were here, and all they cared about was we didn't tear the building down. That's all they cared about, as long as we didn't tear the building down.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that proposal indicated that, they put a lot of time into building a collaborative proposal for us, and so I think they were trying to think about how best to use it for the community, but yeah, they didn't want it torn down, but I think, you know, they, they helped a lot of organization leaders to try to determine how it can be used.
I do want to clarify, we had three interested parties, one came in very late, so you have not been with us since then. And I had assured the third party that we were not going to make a decision last meeting. So the following day, I called and let them know that we did make a decision, and I apologize for that. And he said that they, they weren't financially able to do anything at this time. But they did ask to go and look at the building, and they had some thoughts. So I, I cleared the air with that third party, and they are not currently still interested. But we do have two interested parties still in purchasing the building, which means they want the building saved. So.
You can always change your mind, it's just if you're going to do direct, it's averaging the two, if you're going to do public bid, it's minimum bid. Those are your conditions.
And our agendas do go public, and I have personally not had any conversation with Josh, Josh Rosenoffel, but I believe he is one of the interested parties, and he's here tonight, so I'm going to give him an opportunity if he has anything he wants to say.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think you kind of hit it there a little bit, as far as any structure that's left unattended for quite a while is generally noted as deteriorating quite a bit faster than one is being used, for whatever reason. That particular building, from walking through it, from looking at the inspection report, limited instruction knowledge, walking through it, it is one of the more sound buildings in the downtown, I've been in quite a few of them. So as far as one to keep around, that one definitely has more potential than a lot of them do, especially long-term. Cost prohibitive, you know, you can get something in there and not use up everything you've got just to maintain the building, is kind of what I'm saying there. The building also sets itself apart, it's good for a larger company, or it's good for several small companies as it sits, with not a lot of money that has to be put into it that way. And then any business you bring into is obviously going to bring tax money to the county, right now with being a county building, and there's no tax revenue, property tax, you've got that, we've also got any revenue that's going to come into the city building, so as it sits, and to maintain that building, keep that building, you know, it's a cost, a cost to the county, to the town, not. Yeah, it's going to be a period as far as demolishing it and building anything, if, and, or have to maintain it from then on. Down the road, I understand having, wanting to have a nice spot for treating, come to. If that, parks and stuff like that. That'd be kind of my, my stance on it, yeah, I do have interest in it as far as investment in, in bringing some companies into it. Office, office type buses, so that's kind of what I'm standing on right now.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I, I want to, the, when I read the newspaper article, the way the newspaper article made it sound, it made it sound like the building was in terrible shape, and that Vicki and I voted against the the motion, because we didn't want to put any money into it. That, that wasn't it at all, in my opinion. The reason that I voted against Darryl's motion at our last meeting, because I want to sell the building, okay? That is what I want to do with the building. Now, I don't know why you voted against Darryl's motion at the last meeting. My motion that I voted is, I want to sell the building. He voted to not sell the building, for whatever reason. But that was, it wasn't that I didn't want to knock down any money into it, I want to sell the building. That's what I want to do. You know, whether they want to make a pavilion, restrooms, or whatever they want to do with the building. the building, I want to sell the building. That's what I want to do with the building. I want to put it back on the tax rolls. That's what the Public Works Committee, um, recommends. And that's what I want to do with the building. I want to sell the building. That's why I voted the way I voted. And it has, it has nothing to do with anything else other than, it doesn't have anything to do with money or anything. I, that's the reason the way I voted. But that's not the way it, it was worded.
For me, I'm on, I, firstly, I could go either way. I could get rid of the building and not have, lose any sleep over it, sell it, it remains still intact, put it back on the tax rolls. That's kind of what I wanted to do initially. But then when I listened to Abby and Zane, it limits what we can or can't do with the building. You know, if we get rid of it, there's no opportunities for pavilion. If we get rid of it, there's no other opportunities to do anything with that. So if you want to put public restrooms in, say you want to tear the roof off of it, make it an open air, area with, with public restrooms, you know, you can't do any of that unless we retain the building. So I changed my mind, but.
We still retain the parking lot, though.
Yeah. So, you know, initially that was my thoughts. Didn't make any sense to me when we initially talked about it. Keeping it, putting money into it when we could sell it, get it back on the tax rolls and just be done with it. But then if we lose control of that building, we don't have any options for the future, for pavilion option. We don't have any other options. Maybe it's not a pavilion. Maybe it's a, it's a open-air center where it has some history for the town, you know? I could, I could support that too.
Maybe you could take the back of the parking lot and make a pavilion and restrooms at the rear of the parking lot back there.
As possible. So that's why I proposed the motion to support.
And still save the building.
Zane and Abby, to retain control of the building. And we don't have any idea what the future of that building is. But I do agree with Josh, living it empty and not doing anything when it's detrimental in the long term.
I think that was the biggest part of my voting to sell it was because I can't see us taking on a major project like that in any time in the near future. And in the meantime, it just sits. So I, I mean, I can, I can see both, but it's a tough call.
Well, that SB1, like Zane didn't vote for the, the wage benefit increase, and I understand his reasoning for that. That SB1, I don't think we've all know the ramifications of that yet.
Well, I don't know that we need to go anyplace more with this tonight. I just wanted to make my point in that I don't think we're done. I don't think the vote that we made is the end-all.
So are you gonna continue to have this on every meeting from here on out?
I would prefer it not be.
Thank you.
This is something that's out there. I don't know the back and forth of it, but I believe the parking lot just on the north side of the, uh, post office is owned by the commissioners. So is that something that can be aimed by the town to do something there? That's just a vacant parking lot now that's not being used.
I think they own that.
Yeah, the commissioners own it. So that's something that can be.
I don't believe so.
Part of their parking.
They would give up that parking area?
Yeah, it's part of their.
We had tried to buy that.
Parking ratio that they figured out.
Single occasion.
And I was under the impression that, um, Harry and the team had said that things were okay for the winter and that we were gonna create a committee and start working on this for the future. Did I misunderstand that? Because you had said everything was good for, that we didn't need to winterize it or everything.
Yeah, we got, we got everything set down to minimum temperature and we go in there at least once a week and check things out. So it's not, in your opinion, unless something catastrophic happens like a, a major leak of the roof or something like that, we're, we're okay for right now?
Yeah, I believe they've already did the study on the roof.
One question that I did have while we're on this topic of the 110 building, yeah, the 110 Orange Street, um, can there be a way that we take down the EDC sign off of that building? The B Noble EDC sign would be my preference. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but they did vacate that premises.
They're not there anymore. It's kind of misleading.
Who, who does that fall under?
Detention typically.
That would be Cory.
They should have taken it when they left.
Did he get that, that before this?
Yeah.
The same day he turned the light.
Scott, you want to tell them they should have taken it?
I can tell them that. Do we have to store it? Kurt, do we have to store it for a year? Do we have to store it for a year?
Yeah, in charge of it.
Aaron's on the board. They might want to come slow.
That, there's no way that we're just gonna, um, let that 110 South Orange Street just wallow for years, sit empty for years.
Well, I, I didn't remember the committee, but I'm not saying that we didn't say that. Um, I, I think we'll struggle to get a committee, but we'll, we'll add that to accomplishments we need to battle at the beginning of the year.
All right.
I'd like to keep revising that for at least the next two years.
No, that's a no.
When's your term up?
Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you for your time, Josh.
And you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Thank you, Josh.
Any other old business?
Can I ask Josh a question? If there was a tornado in Alvin, where did you go?
I did one on my day.
I have four on the go on there. I'm in town. I'm going there. That place is going nowhere.
There's our tornado shelter. There's our tornado shelter.
Did he say what I think he did? Okay, any other old business? We will move on to new business. Item number one is the all-inclusive playground project, the Diamond Discovery Zone. First, we're gonna follow up on consideration of the RBC recommendation to spend the $250 in TIF funds. $250,000, yes, thank you. Are you giving us that follow-up or?
I don't, I mean, I'll do whatever you want. I mean, I, you know my position. I put it in writing, Tony, I think reiterated it. It's not that I'm opposed. Matter of fact, I love the project. I wanted to spend the money. I don't have any proof that it's, um, been in the plan or haven't, I've never seen the plan. I've never seen the, uh, any, the EDA plan or annual spending. And it's fault, I don't believe, but I, and maybe it's just not available. So my recommendation is if you're gonna do it, uh, you do it subject to having, uh, the proper legal procedure to make sure that the plan either is located and applied, or if it isn't located, it's prepared, done, and proved before you commit to the funds. That's my recommendation. Of course, as people have said in the past, you've spent money before on these type of projects and nobody's ever called you on it. So that's a risk for you to decide whether or not to take. I personally, of course, can't take that risk because my job is to make sure I point out to you what's legal and what's not. It is legal to spend if it's in the plan, the annual spending plan and the EDA plan. I've never seen Jeff Peters' annual spending plan and I've never seen an EDA plan that contains that. The difference between that and the police money is, there's a statute that specifically addresses police and fire. There is not a statute that addresses park. So you now have to extrapolate out from the old language that I gave you that talks about economic development and yada, 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 touching and connected, not connected and all that. And I think you can make that leap if you have it in the plan or if you have it in the plan and it somehow includes it. So I've said in my piece, I'm not objecting. I think it's a great project. I really want you to give them the money. I just want you to do it the legal way that I can defend.
Well, if I could say something, I, we, we believe that, that, um, using park funds out of TIF is allowed in TIF number one because we have that, it was modified the Economic Development Plan with this resolution 2004-02. And it specifically says what's allowed is, and it was revised or modified to include this, the purchase, lease, or construction of park facilities. So that, we believe, allows, um, RDC and therefore the council to spend any amount of money on park, uh, types of projects if it's out of TIF number one. Now, TIF number two, the, um, the document that relates to that, uh, is, is a little more vague. And it's the, both the declaratory resolution and the Economic Development Plan is in resolution number one dash 2002. And it relates to TIF number two. And what it says there is what's allowed is, uh, the, is equipment that promotes economic development, period. And so we, um, I, I made the point that park equipment ought to qualify because a park system i- is part of the town's economic development, economic development effort. Economic development is simply the town's effort by many means of attracting new business and retaining the existing business base. And so the argument is therefore a viable park system adds to the quality of life, which is a, an essential, uh, for economic development. It's like having, you know, a safe community, essential for economic development. So it's, it's a, it's a vague definition. And so, but it, I think it could be used. That's just my opinion and I don't know if that would hold, but it's equipment that promotes economic development. So I feel we could still hang our hat on that, that hey, well, we can spend it from either TIF one can invest in the park or even TIF two can invest in the, into the park, in the park. And I did say though, that, and we'll be saying it again tomorrow night with RBC, that we should pass the resolution, uh, that's before them tomorrow night, saying that, uh, they can take it from TIF two. But then we'll go ahead in May of this upcoming year and we'll revise the econo, economic development plan and the associated declaratory resolution. And we'll also make sure that it's in the 2027 spending plan. So that, that's what I, it's gonna be before RBC to kind of say that, uh, you know, that they're putting their, their commitment to it now and we'll just do the appropriate modifications in the month of May, which is when we, we do that thing annually anyway, the spending plan. Uh, and so I, I guess I would hope the council could pass it in a similar manner on those same, on those same, uh, you know, principal points that I mentioned. And again, knowing that we can take the extra step in May to make it more specific, you know, TIF two, instead of just saying equipment that promotes economic development, we would say similar to TIF one, park, i- infrastructure, equipment, and improvements are eligible. So we can make it more specific at that time, but, uh, there's already enough specificity if, if a little, a little, a little vagueness there in the TIF two definition, equipment that, you know, promotes economic development. But I think enough that both RBC and the council are happy with that without any further to do. So the further.
Are you happy with that?
No, um, of course not. You know, my proposal, recommendation is.
Of course not.
That you actually do the right thing, amend the plan, add all those things that are not in there now, if you can't find them. Um, I'm not talking about the annual spending plan. Yes, that's fine. The EDA plans, uh, to me, they, they exist somewhere. They had to, or you couldn't have created it in the first place. They've been amended. They made its reference from somewhere, the stuff that Steve sent me. Uh, so to me, I don't know why we don't do the right thing, amend the plans, um, add the current language that allows for all different kinds of things, including police and fire, et cetera, et cetera, get them cleaned up and move forward. I don't, unless there's a rush, since they're not spending this money right away, I don't understand why we don't do that. It's not that I disagree with his argument. Matter of fact, I think his argument is very good and, and I don't think he would lose that argument with the state board of accounts. I just struggle. Why are we, um, trying to manipulate around the language and not just do it right first?
We don't have this EDA document, am I correct?
Well, I, I, I believe we do from what, from what I'm looking at. And, and this, Kurt, I thought you had, uh, had this in your possession too, but.
What the, I just, whatever you sent me, that big packet of 3D materials.
Yes, that was it. That was the one.
Um, it, it's references declaratory resolutions, it references plans, the actual EDA plans as amended are not included in it. There's plan commission references to EDA plans. We should talk about all this, but the actual EDA plans are not included.
Well, the one in TIF two is, I believe.
Maybe so.
Pardon me?
Maybe so. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't bring it to.
But begin, that's the one though that has the, the more vague definition that the equipment that promotes economic development is allowed.
Which is a good argument. I'm not making, uh, I, I don't want to argue about it, is my point.
I know, but you're wanting us to find documents. You're wanting us to.
Well, you should have those documents.
I, I know.
The fact that you don't should motivate you to want to do that.
I know, but you're wanting us to do a document that we don't have.
Yeah, it's easy. We just create a new one.
Right, and what does that cost?
Whatever it takes to do. It's a lengthy process.
Hey, listen.
Thousands.
Thousands.
It's thousands, meaning like? I don't know, 10,000? I don't know. Haven't looked into it. I don't know what they have and don't have. In the end, like I said, I don't care what you do, but if you're gonna ask me if it's okay, I'm not gonna tell you it is because it's, I don't have proof that it is. So do it, follow Steve's, uh, recommendation. I'm just telling you, it's not how it should be done. Believe it. That's on you. I mean, you've made those decisions before without me. You can make those decisions again. You don't have to do it the way I suggest. You ask me what I suggest, you can do it the way he's recommending. It's not how I would do it. I would amend both plans, make it clear, clean it up, once and for all be done. But I don't care anymore. It's whatever you want me to do.
And I'm saying we compromise best of both worlds. We take Kurt's advice, but apply it in the tail end in the month of May. Revise the economic development plan with this declaratory resolution. We're gonna revise the spending plan anyways at that point, the 2027 spending plan, which is a simpler thing to do. The other two things would be more involved, as Kurt alluded to.
Technically, we're not spending any money out of TIF, correct, by that point?
Uh, correct. We, we would not have spent any money until the 2027 is when it's, the, the park, uh, all-inclusive playground is, uh, intended to be envisioned to be built. You know, at some point, there'd be an RFP, an award would be done, uh, to a vendor, but then, you know, we were looking at the, uh, what, I forget it was this, the, the summer maybe of 2027 for the actual build.
So you've never been able to actually find this plan?
Well.
The mast, whatever, what's that master?
The economic, uh, EDA plan.
Well, I think we found it for, as, as I said, for TIF number two, uh, is what I, most I can make of it here, which is found in its resolution when it was modified. I don't know if it's, pardon you, that was the original.
It's when you did a bond, Ice Miller came in and they cleaned up parts of it and that's what he was friends, you know? And they did probably a good job, but at some point, they referenced the old plan, which leads you to believe there is a plan.
And Ice Miller should have that, correct?
Well, you should have it. The town should have.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But if we don't...
They might.
What about the, have you talked to the RDC members? We've got some RDC members that there are for years and years, do they, is that anything that they've come across in the stuff that they have?
Well, we brought it up at the last meeting, and, you know, I don't know if anybody's, I don't recall anybody specifically saying they remembered it or anything like that, I mean. And the nuance of what it is, as Kurt has alluded to, there is, you have to, you know, you have to really read the fine print, is this, what's the declaratory resolution, and where's the economic development plan that it's referencing?
Alyssa?
Hopefully I'm not speaking out of line, but after the last meeting, I went home and was told and talked about it. And he said that that was sent out in August, he found an email, I did not personally look at it, but I said, they said there's no economic development plan and we need that, before you guys can establish which TIF it is allowed out of. And he said, we have that, we've seen that, he went back in his email and said it was just discussed with the August RDC meeting. So I can tell him that Tom prepared with that tomorrow night, but he did pull up, like I said, I didn't look at it, but he knew as soon as I said that, but he had seen one.
Yeah, so yeah, it's been a topic of discussion before the RDC, but, I mean, you know, it's, my definition of what constitutes the resolution and the economic development plan is obviously different than, you know, Kurt's, this is going to be the legal one, I just know that...
I don't think it's different, I think the question is, where are the EDA plans, the original ones and the amended ones? I have never seen a complete record, a reference, the declaratory resolution, confirmatory resolution, the plan commission resolutions that you sent me, reference those documents, I've never seen those actual documents.
Well, the good news is none of us have.
So if we can't find it...
That's my point, if you can't find it, at some point, make the decision, whenever you're doing it, to do new ones, get them cleaned up, and put them in place, so that you don't ever have this question again. Because if you do a bond, for instance, they're going to require, the bond council, Ice Miller, Martin's Warbird, whoever's bond council, is going to require these plans, so you need them at some point. This is a big deal, but it is a small issue right now, if you ever try to do a TIF bond, again, they're going, you're going to have to produce these, so...
So whatever entity helped us with that before, is that something they could possibly have?
They might have it.
Let me say one more thing.
We should have that.
In this Resolution number 1-2002, and this is all about TIF number two, the first part of it is all the declaratory resolution. Then there's a factual report in support of the findings relating to that resolution. Then, it gets into, it says, literally, it says, this document is the economic development plan. And so, and there it is, and it shows, you know, the project description, the project area, the objectives, purpose, and intro. But this is the one that says vaguely, the equipment that promotes economic development. So for TIF two, we're covered with both the declaratory resolution and the economic development plan, but its language is vague. And, you know, can we justify that park equipment qualifies for TIF number two? I think so, based on that it's equipment that promotes economic development, i.e. the overall health of the business community. Businesses want to locate in a place and stay in a place that has a good community quality of life, that consists of a great park system, which we have. And of course, the project that is being proposed is going to enhance that as well. But again, that's how I would interpret, so it could be, I think it could still be come from TIF two, if you're comfortable with the park equipment qualifies as equipment that promotes economic development. And Park one, pardon me, TIF number one, you know, it says specifically in this Resolution 2004-02, and that it's a, it modifies and it's a confirming resolution, it's amended, it lists all the things that it's amending, all the resolutions before it. And it says, you know, the purchase, lease, or construction of park facilities, it's actually in the resolution. Now, does that have a plan, I haven't seen the economic development plan, but it's saying that that's, it's modifying the plan, but...
There's lots of discussion there, by the plan commission, by the RDC, et cetera, but there's not actually an approved plan in the resolution.
Right, but they want to take this $250,000 from TIF two, am I correct?
Yes, yeah, and, and maybe Carol could comment, the RDC is saying, you know, that's the more flush fund, but, you know, push comes to shove, I mean, TIF one could support it as well, but...
So all we have to agree on is, if we think that supports economic development?
Yes.
Because we already have the EDA plan?
Correct, we have the declaratory resolution setting, amending that whole, or, I don't know if this is creating or ending.
So we have the EDA plan?
And the plan, yes, we do.
Okay, for TIF one, no, for TIF two?
For TIF, that's for TIF number two, we have the resolution and the plan, which describes, you know, equipment that promotes economic development.
We have the plan for TIF two?
Yes, we do.
And we have the resolution?
Which is one I just read you where it says, this document is the economic development plan. An old thing, the resolution and the plan, you know, it looks like it's about, you know, maybe 10 pages or something, so there's some volume to it.
And we have a TIF two, excuse me, economical, economic development plan.
Correct, that's part of the declaratory resolution.
We do not have an economic development plan that we can find.
It's alluded to, it's, and so forth.
Yes, I agree with all that, you could revert all, it's never been found.
Can we combine those two into one plan?
No, because they have to be separate.
Okay.
Okay, so let me ask you this, Kurt.
Yep.
Now that you've heard that, can we or can we not support $250,000 out of TIF two?
You can do whatever you want, but you're not going to get my blessing unless you follow my outline that I gave you in this email from way back November 16.
Okay, but we do, we do have the EDA plan for TIF two.
We think you do, you don't know for sure.
He just showed it to us.
I believe, I believe we do, and it's labeling itself as that. It says, it says right on the top, economic development plan.
But it doesn't reference park equipment or machinery.
No, it says equipment that promotes economic development.
Which, my point is, you don't...
So we would, we can update that part?
You can, the problem is, and this is where nobody wants to do it, or at least we're going to wait till May, is to do it, you got to go through a lengthy process, you have to have public hearings, you have to have plan commission involved, you have to do declaratory, confirmatory.
Can I see that, please?
Yeah.
And honestly, whether you do it or not for this project, the language in your proposed EDA plan is really old, and it doesn't cover the current statute.
And it's all part of the...
It's not any longer, this is just a... I guess I don't...
I sent you...
He didn't?
Yeah, it's from like November 16.
And that's what, I haven't changed my position since.
But we did, I don't think we got old.
And that was after reviewing the 83 pages Steve sent me.
Economic development plan for the economic development area.
Yeah, your plot area?
Got an option.
Elect the office, there's nobody coming.
The point is, if you're going to do it, you have to take the risk, because I can't, I can't. I would, I would.
I don't know.
Well, have a hat till 2027, we might want to start.
The one thing I don't, is there urgency to do this?
The only urgency, I think, perceived urgency involves fundraising.
Yeah, we need a letter of commitment.
Yeah, which I've never seen either, by the way, I mean, that's on the agenda, it was on the agenda last time, nobody's ever shared this letter.
That's not wrote, never wrote it.
Oh, well, there you go.
I mean, yeah.
I haven't seen it.
I mean, we can offer a letter of support.
No, yeah, yeah, we...
Why can't we do fundraising without a letter?
For grants, grant application.
If I was going to give $50,000 to a project, and it's four, 500,000 dollar project, and somebody's going to commit 250, but you don't get a lot of support, that's kind of odd.
Kind of hard to convince them to, it's a donation.
But if it's a donation that gets reverted, if the project doesn't go, they get the money back, right? We have to back...
The project's going to go, if we have the commitment letter of 250.
So they're all going to give their money, well, but if they pass a motion to favorable recommendation for the 250,000 to RDC, isn't that what you need?
Yeah.
Then why don't we just do that, why are we arguing about all this stuff? I don't understand it.
I think we can answer it better when I tell what you're going to do.
I want to repeat that statement.
Everybody agrees that they're favorable, so a motion to, for a favorable recommendation to spend the 250,000, subject to legal compliance, well, why can't we just do that?
They were concerned that the subject to legal compliance would...
Would not be a guarantee that they have security.
Well, it's as guaranteed as I can give you. If you guys say we're going to do it, as long as it's done legally, I'm going to make sure it's done legally. Or you can take the risk.
Could you get feedback from Mandy about that, and she, are they okay with that, or no?
So you want me to wait till the other people come back?
Oh, sure.
And we've got, we've got, she's got feedback from that.
So Kurt, just, I want to rehash all this, but I just want clarification in terms of my own mind, I've talked about TIF one, TIF two, EDAs, EDPs, everything.
Yeah.
RDCs.
RDA.
Okay, so, so we do have an economic development plan for TIF two, for the EDA TIF two. You're just saying that this one needs updating.
That one could be updated if you wanted to, to make it clear, and my thought was, since you can't find EDA number one plan, we might as well do them both at the same time, and kill two birds with one stone and be done, that's my point.
And I'm not disagreeing with that at all. Another question that I would have pertaining to this one particularly, how complicated, complicated is it to update this one, just this one? Since we already have this, we're not talking $10,000 to update this.
You've got to go through a process, so, and that's, just to answer your question, the reason why it's complicated isn't the drafting, it's the coordination, and the timing, and the things you got to do to make sure they happen exactly.
Beginning to end, if you had to ballpark, is this like a two-month process?
Yeah, probably, two to three, yeah.
Okay.
Depends on publication rules.
Okay, so, like, we, we want to take it from TIF two, we have an EDP for TIF two, economic development plan, right? Okay, so checks, checks one and checks two, so all we have to do is update this, right? And it's not going to be tens of thousands of dollars, I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't do TIF one as well, but...
Because you're going to pay twice to do it, is my point, and it needs cleaned up, because we don't have one.
Right.
Is that our decision or the RDC's decision?
Well, ultimately, I mean, it's up to you in the end, because you're the one writing the checks, or not only them, but you're the guy. Now, it needs RDC approval, and it needs plan commission approval, and it needs public hearings.
Alyssa has the updated letter from AWS on, from our previous meeting, we, she reached out to him and...
So Kurt was asking about just putting in the letter of support, or letter of commitment that, with legal compliance, that it was committed. I had expressed concern last meeting that I wasn't sure that we wanted to put that in there, because 250,000 is a lot, and AWS had told us that it may be a matching grant, so if we go to them with that and then it wasn't followed through, I mean, hopefully it would be, but if for some reason it wasn't, then we just drug them on, we, you know, we thought we had that good commitment. So I talked to the AWS, they do not need the letter of support for the grant application process to begin, which is what the January 1st, 16th to the 30th timeline is. That is just when we do a letter of intent, meaning that we're applying, telling them that we are intending to apply. Then they actually have to invite us to apply, and we will hear on that by February 6th. With the grant application opening on the 13th and being due on the 27th, at that point, by the February 27th deadline, we would at that point need to have the letter of commitment to put in at the budget part of the application, so that they're seeing you have other funders, and we talked at our meeting earlier today about, you know, if we reach out to other, you know, community foundations, DECO, whoever it may be, that we list in that at that point as well, we've applied for these pending grant approval or whatever.
January 25th?
February 27th is when that's due. So at that point, we would need that. She did say, prior, when we met with her, she had said that her guess was that they would do a match. Now she's saying that the last few that they have done, playgrounds specifically, they have done last dollars in.
What does that mean?
Or that the project had secured funding prior to them issuing payment, so they're not going to pay us if we can't prove that we had already received specific funding.
So is it still considered like a match at that point, if you have all the money?
Potentially, she can't give me that for sure answer right now, because it goes before a grant committee.
And the...
But she says, as long as we have this document, the letter of support, and they don't care where it's coming from. They just want to know, we're committing, they don't care where, which, where that fund is coming from. So as long as we can have that by February 27th, that we can move forward and have the grant decision by May 20th. If not, then we will have to wait until the August cycle, hopefully it will be decided in August. So we can go forward and move along, and then if come February 27th, we don't have that, then I just have to contact her and say, we don't have this letter of support yet, we need applause and move forward in August.
And the reason AWS is a big deal, in my opinion, is it's Angola just got awarded, and they just go to all-inclusive playground. I think it's big stuff when you see grants like AWS, and when you write other grants, matching grants, it all, it all coincides with, you know, getting money in right away, either matching or support of other foundations. So that's why we're trying to communicate early in this whole process on how we want to, you know, do things, so...
So I guess as far as where the committee is standing, as long as we have the support, we, we don't have to know at this point where that is coming from. And I think the RDC has made that commitment regardless.
So why don't we pass a motion that basically says that the council is in favor of this project, and fully intends to commit this money, once the plan is properly amended, or something like that, but you don't want to do that. If you have not amended your plan, it's her or a letter, I don't know.
I don't think there's any question that we're going to support the project, correct? Or we want, there's no reason to put it on a back burner when it's not necessary?
And we're in support, right? We're in support, everybody's in support.
Well, let's, let's get that off our list.
And for, you know, for purpose of, let's say, the different grant agencies, technically, we, I mean, well, I guess we, from Kurt's standpoint, we can't hang our hat on TIF one, even though it says park facility is allowed, because there's no, there may not be an economic development plan.
There probably is, where is it now, all that?
Yeah, if we could.
We bonded before the plan exists, because even Carol says we should have this.
So at this point, that is, that's got to be a priority, is finding that for a lot of reasons.
What I'm trying to say is, don't let, don't get hung up on all of that. If you want to get her a letter of support, as long as it's drafted carefully, less said than better, and is clear that it's subject to some contingencies that are yet to be figured out, I'd give her the letter of support tomorrow. It's not going to be a financial commitment letter that says, you're going to get the money no matter what. It, it's not going to be a financial commitment letter that says, "You're gonna get the money no matter what." But it's gonna say something along the lines, whatever your motion is, that the council supports, proves, sends a favorable recommendation to commit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of tip money wherever it comes from to this project. That's all you need here, right?
But I think she needs...
I mean, we need it to be a for sure commitment, but where is...
Yeah, a favorable recommendation is not the same thing as we're committed to.
So we can change it.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Then you have to give direction on whether you want to follow up or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, we do that. You can commit the funds and do them as Steve is suggesting, or you can commit the funds and do it as I was suggesting. I don't, in the end, it's up to you.
Who, who's doing the letter? Who's doing the, who's doing the letter of, um, amendment?
But you just got a really large award. You're good at it.
You need an RDC approval tomorrow.
RDC.
Sure.
So I just asked Kurt if the letter could be sent on behalf of the town council and the RDC and you have both presidents signing it.
Who's writing it?
Casey and I could come up with a good version.
And they'd have to, they, the RDC would have to approve that tomorrow night? Just the document.
I'm not taking any time off.
You can write it tonight, come on.
Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I will. Say that the council president, right? And the RDC president draft the document committing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tip funds to the discovery, Diamond Discovery Zone All-Inclusive Playground project. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tip funds. Is that enough?
He said that it's best to better.
That's my motion.
So we're not staying pending?
No, I'm not staying pending.
We need to do that.
I'm sure we have the documents. We've bonded. I've been on this council twenty-five years.
Why don't you have the document, Kurt?
I probably do.
He probably does.
We just paid off the bond. We have the documents.
No, I'm not. Normally, there's a bond, and I have all that in it.
Okay, we have a motion.
We have a motion. And a second.
We have a motion and a second. For a letter to be drafted, signed by town, council president and RDC president over commitment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, you'll have to add that to the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, approval of memorandum of understanding with Community Foundation of Noble County to establish a fund for grants and donations. And just so you know, um, the memorandum of understanding is signed by council president, but then the other document is signed by the Community Foundation Board President, our clerk treasurer, our town manager and our parks superintendent. And that document is...
I've never seen it.
Non-permanent fund agreement between Noble County and the Town of Albion Park Department.
Designated non-permanent fund agreement between Noble County Community Foundations and the Town of Albion Municipal Building Corp.
Which is, this is what we do, like what we did for the skate park and all of our other stuff.
This is just so they house the money. The Noble County Foundation houses the money during fundraising.
Okay, so do you need a, a motion? To sign that? Everybody?
Yes, approval of, is, have it listed on the agenda?
Um, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with Community Foundation of Noble County. Uh, this is gonna allow us to establish fund for grants and donations for the all-inclusive playground.
I'm just gonna ask a question first. Casey, for the grants, can you not accept it just through the town? Because the fees for, because it says that they'll charge fees for the grants as well, so...
Yep.
If you get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, that's seventy-five hundred dollars that they're gonna keep.
It's three percent on the first, um, year of donations and grants, then three percent a year after the anniversary date. And that's... And, yeah, and that's, that's been, um, what we've done in the past with every project, so...
Is that just because we can't house money?
Well, it, you know, it's...
I just thought they had a better, I thought they, before there was a pass-through, had it always been that kind of...
As, as long as I've been doing it.
I mean, I have all the fund statements for the others that I'd like to look at them.
Yeah, for the...
They take care of all of the, um, all like submitting people with the...
The tax.
Yes.
Yeah, all the tax, but all...
So if we were to do that here, then that's quite a burden for us to have to administer that. To me, it's worth seventy-five hundred dollars to have somebody else deal with that.
Yeah. I just thought that there was, if it was a pass-through, that there was a different route that you could take in order to not pay as much of the administration fees, but I could be wrong.
They, um, you know, um...
Sorry, it's more than just rubber stamping.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, they'll send out the thing, you know, work with us on, um, you know, some wording, yeah, fundraising stuff and, um...
On the plus side, we also earn some interest on that money. So the hope is that your interest is going to cover the, um, fees on the, on them administering the fund.
Oh, that's true because it'll, some of it will be there for a year or two maybe.
And even when I was on the park board, we, we had to do, do that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, them are good, them are good questions and, and, you know, Mark Green knew it was on agenda and if we had to call our questions, we couldn't, um, but, uh, yeah, you know, the website's gonna direct everything to the foundations.
Yeah.
Not saying we have enough going on here, but if you have hundreds, under hundreds of people, not hundreds, but hopefully, you know, it, it's all gonna go right there. So, and it's all itemized, it's all, you know, quarterly signed, all got, not saying it wouldn't here, I'm just, yeah.
So Zane made the motion, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the MOU with Community Foundation?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is that it, Casey?
Um, yeah, I wanna sign that tie because I know that December seventeenth, they have a meeting, so don't let me slip out of here without signing that, thank you. Yes. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, on to updating and acceptance of streets in Rolling River Bluff subdivision.
The status of that is that we're waiting on Keith Leatherman, uh, who has agreed to, um, yet through his surveying company that he's hired, legal descriptions of the streets in the, uh, streets that are already constructed there for phase one and two, that Kurt needs to insert in the ordinance for street, uh, acceptance. So it's, the wheels are in motion, we're waiting on Keith to come up with a legal, then Kurt can finish the document, and then it'll come to the council with official action.
Another question. Is, is that, uh, is Keith fully on board with continuing to do, to try to provide that information even though he sent an updated email to us?
Well, that's a good, a good question, point. He didn't rescind that, uh, that offer of, of getting a legal descriptions drafted because it's already in, uh, in the works, but, uh, I guess we'll find out. I didn't, I didn't have any communication with him after that flurry of, uh, emails over the past two days, I believe it was, where...
Okay, I'm just curious.
He's, yeah, that's a good question and it'll be interesting to find out if we get another surprise there or not.
I will say that I consulted a, uh, survey. And we discussed it a little bit. He has done hundreds of additions in Fort Wayne. I think everyone that was made in the eighties, nineties and early two thousands, probably had a thing there. But anyways, uh, he said he's never done an actual legal description of the roads all through Fort Wayne. So I, probably not what you wanna hear. Uh, and he said it would be an absolute nightmare to try to do legal descriptions of a road. So I don't know, but chances are that we're probably not gonna bank on having legal descriptions to take ownership of these streets. I'm not saying that we can't, but just from a survey standpoint and how they would do it, that they never do legal descriptions of, of roads.
That's because their, their plaques come in, because we represent the plan commission down there, their plaques come in and they have all that dedicated already. This is a strange situation where it was never dedicated at the time, which it should have been, of course. So we're trying to clean up something that should have been addressed back when it was originally done. And in the future, you're gonna do that as part of your plating process. We're gonna have them dedicate the streets, the roads, the sewer easements, the water easements, all that right on the plaque. So you won't have a legal description. This is a unique situation, correct? So was the other one from the, on the east side.
Yep.
So you're right, though. He's right, you would never need a legal description for the dedication of a road because it should have been in the plaque.
Yeah.
Do, do we have the plat?
It...
So why do we need anything?
It doesn't wrap it.
Because what?
Doesn't wrap it. Because the original surveyor did a poor job. Probably the best way to put it, yeah. That's, that's really what it comes down to.
Okay. So we can move on to the next item? Update on the street vacation with Miners and Fishers and South Street.
Well, um, this was, I'm gonna be referring to Kurt largely. What, um, we, we were informed by the county, Noble County, that, uh, they could not record the, the, the vacation that occurred of that street in question because there were some fatal, fatal errors in their, in their estimation. So I gave, uh, gave that to Kurt's team in his absence and, uh, and then I think that, um, Kurt had, had a very specific opinion. Uh, and if you need to reference it, write it down, Howard, okay? So, yeah, with that, I think, um, we were asking Kurt to, you know, please correct with, with what we thought would be, hey, correct the ordinance. The town apparently did something wrong. And, and there were a couple of things, like it, the, it wasn't determined who got the street that was vacated,
which is not something wrong, but...
Okay, and that, and because normally, I mean, you, you might assume fifty-fifty.
The law says that, you do not put that in the ordinance. So the auditor is basically dumping that responsibility on you, which they're not, they shouldn't, and you shouldn't take on that responsibility. That's their job to do. The law makes it clear for that effect and have dealt with them on this issue in other communities in Noble County. They understand that and they're just basically pushing back to you to say, "You do their work." So I wouldn't pay me to do that, but it's their job to make that determination. The statute says who gets the land. You wouldn't wanna change the ordinance to accommodate that. That's my recommendation. I wouldn't change it at all. I think you did it fine.
Well, and the, the, Chris Manners, for instance, wants to develop that land and he needs that, that, I forget if it's thirty-three or sixty-six foot that was vacated, that portion that was his, he needs that and be able to, you know, have that, have title to it or whatnot and it needs to be recorded. So he can't really build until whatever the county says needs to be straightened out is straightened out.
And that's an argument with him and the county, in my opinion, and my email makes that clear. That's not an argument with the town. You vacated it, the law says that it is split fifty-fifty on both sides and that's between him and the auditor to clarify. You warranting or representing or changing an ordinance to say that he gets it is not something we would recommend you do. We don't do that anywhere else and that's going above and beyond your requirements as a town. But if you want me to do it, we'll do it.
No.
And I can clarify that with the auditor because we've had to do that before if she needs further clarification.
That would be my preference.
That would be great. That would be helpful and, and I, you know, I could just, so that it gets off of our plate.
I can do that. If you give me authority, I'll let him know.
Whatever clarity is needed that you get back from the county, we could pass on to Chris Manner and the other owner there.
Yeah. It's not his, it's not his job to argue with her.
And it's really not ours either, but...
No, but you're gonna get a lot further than he is, trust me.
And I'm happy to because we've had this argument with them before, so...
Right.
For the record, the statute makes it clear it's the auditor's job to make the determination, not the town council. And you're not under the land.
Right. But you're gonna get a lot further than he will, trust me.
So I will, unless you tell me otherwise, I will reach out to this person and explain and share a copy of the statute. Is that what you'd like me to do?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, on to approval to process claims, encumbrances and transfers prior to year end. This is just housekeeping for Carol to be able to handle this business.
I'm overly approved to process claims, encumbrances and transfers prior to the end of July twenty-five.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next, um, acknowledgement of the elected official conflict of interest in nepotism forms. There's a pile right here in front of my nameplate. So if you please turn yours in tonight for Carol. On to officer elections and town committees. Um, I do, oh, I didn't hear back from the county, they were supposed to notify me.
I, I listened. They voted on it.
For Tammy Cornish?
Yes, I, I, I listened.
That meeting was yesterday?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And I'm not saying I'm, I, I heard that, so if you want...
Well, she'll probably contact me maybe tomorrow. I don't know.
They did vote on it.
I would've called her today. Okay, so, so I had called and requested that, um, the county commissioners reappoint Tammy Cornish for the plan commission, two-mile jurisdiction position. And that was gonna be taken care of, but yesterday's commissioners needed, so we got that taken care of. Um, Carol's provided us with a list of the twenty-twenty-five committees, unless anybody has, uh, a change that's needed.
What makes new?
Will move to twenty-twenty-six.
Sorry.
Or...
Change the date.
Change the date. Any council have any problems with what you've been on? Carol, let's leave those as they are now. If anything comes up, we can address it at the time. Okay? And I think board and commission is as far as we can, yeah, I think we're good on everything. Tammy was the last one.
Good job, babe.
There's one that's expired, the, like, we could see all the terms that were expired may happen for a while.
Oh, that eat, the, um, the municipal building corporation. Yep.
Which it's not an emergency right now, but at some point, we should probably be getting those updated.
I know those three people that have been on it, two of the three have never been involved in anything since they were asked us to re-hon it, so I don't, is it necessary to do that unless we need it? Or should we?
I mean, we should keep, I think, everything up to date, but that, you could see how long it's been since their terms expired. And if you wanna do anything with the Albion Municipal Building Corp., then we should have those updated. It's not a have-to-do tonight, that was, you know...
My, it says the term expires is nonapplicable. They were appointed in twenty-twenty-one.
On, uh...
On the NBC.
There's another one that I thought their terms expired.
I have that one in front of me.
The EDC, there's three people.
Paul Trilla, Monty Moore. Shelley. Shelley, who are two.
I got it.
Yeah, Shelley's term expired in twenty eighteen.
Oh, yeah.
I assume they don't meet regularly.
I don't, oh, okay, um, yes, the building corporate, yes, it's the EDC that are the ones I was thinking that were expired quite a while ago.
Okay.
Not yet.
That's our own, that's the Albion Economic Development, which I have not known them to be active since, you know, I've been on. I don't know what they've done.
Okay. All right.
Let me say the same first. Did I miss that?
Unless, I ask if anybody had any. If if anything comes up, we'll address it as we need to, but otherwise, we're going to leave it as is. Okay. Uh, the office would appreciate if we have election of officers prior to the beginning of the calendar year, so.
We got a lot to do with officers.
Yep, and I'm going to nominate Vicki as our president again, because I think she's done a fantastic job. And I'm going to also nominate Zane as vice president again.
Make motion?
No, that's my motion.
Okay. I'll second that, if they're willing to accept.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you suckers.
On to approval of accounts payable and payroll vouchers, November twenty sixth and December ninth, two thousand twenty five.
I will make motion we uh, pay the accounts payable and payroll vouchers dated November four, November twenty sixth and December ninth, two thousand twenty five.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, yeah. Um, one last thing before we have adjournment. I was, I had forgot that Bob wasn't going to be here tonight, so I was really hopeful that we have all five department heads, but um, as we close the year, I know we've had a lot of ups and downs, but we've made a lot of great progress. The department head, the town manager, the office staff, Carol. Um, I want to thank all of you and give you praise and recognition for the accomplishments that we make, and I would ask that you pass that down to your department, because it takes the entire council, or excuse me, the entire team, and you're all very much appreciated when you have to spend Thanksgiving weekend climbing snow. We all appreciate it, and I think the people in the town do as well. So thank you very much for your hard work and dedication, your commitment, and please pass that to your employees underneath you. Anyone else, anything else they want to add before we close?
Merry Christmas, straight.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Looking forward to a good two thousand twenty six.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Vicki's sentiments. Steve, thank you for being here. Department heads, you guys are the wheels that keep this town going around. So, you know, when there's a water main that breaks, when there's a crisis at the park, when there's a potential active shooter, Scott, or when there's eight hundred thousand dollars awarded for CCMG, thank you to all of you guys. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And that huge pay increase that, trust me, the the Wage and Benefit Committee, they all fought really hard and did their homework for you. So that's probably, in all the years that I've been here, that has never happened ever.
And lastly, I'd like to say thank you for your confidence in me to be president. Sometimes, yes, see, I want you to enjoy it. However, with the department heads that we have and the employees and the office staff, you know where I'm at when you need me, and I have complete confidence that the wheels are turning every day. So it does make the job tolerable. Thank you also very much. And having said that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I will move to adjourn, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And and Merry Christmas to.